Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a special board selectman meeting to discuss and finish up on warrants for the special annual town meeting.
Excuse me.
We'll start off by looking at the special town meeting warrant for May 9th, 2016, at 6:30. Article number one, establish a fund, public safety stabilization fund. This is a standard article. Do you want me to read it?
Nope. You don't have to read it. And Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder, Articles one, two, four, and five, the board already did approve last week. So this evening, you're only looking at number three and what was number six.
Can we add my approval in there because I had to leave early?
Yeah.
So it's a full board vote.
Yep.
All the ones that we already did?
Yes, on all of them. I went home and watched.
I would make a motion, entertain a motion to approve Articles one, two, four, and five, previously voted on.
So move.
Second, roll.
Aye.
Aye. Article three, PEG access and cable related funds. You notice the sum has changed since the last time we met. It was seventeen thousand, five hundred. That's been upped to twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars to include expenses as well as the salaries. I'm good with that. I would entertain a motion to approve Article three.
So move.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
So we're able to sign.
I will need to reprint that if I'm changing the selectmen's recommendations, but that won't take me along at all.
We're all set on that.
Yep, and just, there was number six. That was the lease of the police cruiser. Capital met last Thursday evening.
Do you have to add it on?
No, it was actually taken off since it was no longer needed. They're not recommending a lease because the interest rates were higher, and the amount of money needed was, I guess, minimal with respect to a vehicle. There were some capital projects that had been completed with some money remaining, so they voted to transfer that toward the vehicle. So the amount needed wasn't crazy. So that was removed. And that was it.
And they're funding that just out of their capital expenditures?
Well, that will be up to, partially, but the balance will be up to the finance committee to determine where that will come from.
Remind me, have you voted on any of these?
No.
Article one, monetary increases. This is a standard article that appears on all special, uh, annual town meeting warrants.
Do we need to do them individually, or can we read through and then hold the ones we want?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
And then accept all the ones we are okay with?
Okay.
So if anybody's gonna name one, hold it so that way Helen won't have to remember which ones were.
Which one do we need to do that?
Three seconds.
Three seconds? Okay. Article two, authorized loans. Both standard. Article three, highway department, chapter ninety. The one note that I would make here is that that was increased, when we first looked at it, it was a hundred and three thousand dollars, based on the letter we received from the DOT. That's been increased to five hundred thousand dollars to reflect what we have.
And Mr. Chairman, in the explanation, I did add at the very end of the sentence, said funds not to exceed the town's apportionment, so that the residents at town meeting understand that we would never borrow more than what we've.
Article four, revolving funds. The police department's been added to that. This is, again, a standard annual town meeting. Article five, cable license fees, seventy-five hundred dollars. Article six, fund other post-employment benefits, O B B. And that's at seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Article seven, bylaw amendment to create a town administrator position.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just point out to the other board members, in speaking with town council earlier today in connection with this article, you'll see in the very first sentence, I've added some language. Prior to today, the article was just to see if the town would vote to amend the bylaw. Because the board has already begun the process, and the intent is to hire somebody before November, which is when the Attorney General would likely approve our bylaws, I've added in language to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a town administrator, comma, and further to amend. And town council did approve that language.
Article number eight, personal bylaw amendment classification and compensation plan. Hold that. Hold, yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Only.
Article nine, to fund the capital budget. Article ten, stabilization fund. Article eleven, fiscal year, this is the budget article, fiscal 2017 budget. Article twelve, town offices. Article thirteen, streetlights. Article fourteen, zoning bylaw, marijuana dispensary.
And Mr. Chairman, on that one, if you recall, Mr. Lara asked that a sentence be included in the explanation, which identified the difference between the off-site, so about midway in that paragraph, it starts off-site, medical marijuana dispensaries only allow retail sales to persons with approved patient cards, while medical marijuana dispensaries allow the growing manufacture and dispensing of marijuana products. So that was added.
If we can come back to that one, because I have questions on that one as well.
Fourteen?
Fifteen, zoning bylaw for solar installations. I have a question on that, so we could come back to that one as well. Article seventeen, council on EJ bylaw amendment.
Do those go through our code, or is it just kind of their own thing?
No, it's in our bylaw.
It's in the bylaw code, okay. And it's all lined up?
Yes, town council reviewed that in comparison to our current bylaw, and he did make some significant changes with respect to the alternate members. Our current bylaws right now allow for three alternate voting members, which have been approved by the AG's office, but town council seems to be of the opinion that they would no longer approve that, so has deleted that from the bylaw.
Article eighteen.
Hold that one, please.
Eighteen?
I think bylaw amendment, number nineteen.
And so the board members are, where I changed this slightly, just formatted it slightly, the language hasn't changed, but I had originally had this as thirty-six dash five, but I just added it at the end of thirty-six dash one. That seems to be the best progressive order of the bylaw.
Can we hold that? I know it was discussed, but I just had a couple of questions.
Okay.
I move to accept all of the articles, with the exceptions of number eight, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, and nineteen.
So move. I'll second that. Sorry.
So you got eight, fourteen?
I'll read them again. Eight, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen.
May second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye. Going back to eight. Question on bylaw amendment, compensation plan. My question to that was, can we have a percentage that we weren't going to go over, like, two percent, kind of thing, across the board?
That will go, my understanding is that two percent is on the budget and on the salaries for those individuals. This gives us the range in which we hire somebody. So we have to make sure that, one, if we give raises, we stay within that, this range. But the two percent has not, this won't affect that two percent that we still need to discuss.
Okay.
This just gives us our hiring. Where do we hire them, based on their experience?
That was my question. With that, we good on that?
Yep, I am.
Make motion to accept it.
Motion to accept Article eight.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Joe, you have a question, like, fourteen?
Yeah, I did, in that, my concern was about number one. I've heard a lot on the radio as of late, as to the governor's reticence to proceed in this area, and I don't think things have settled out. I don't know what the specifics are, but I have questions about that. And it's a growing operation, it goes to large buildings with environmental controls and the whole kind of thing, and where would that, where in the plan of the town, where would that go? In general, this will control the situation, but I just, I'm not comfortable on seeing where it would fit into the town at this point without further explanation.
Well, May 2nd is the hearing for that, and that'll be the time to answer all, get answers for all these questions. And then we can always vote to strike it on the floor, if we need to.
That's a good point. Or we could strike it right now.
I'm not gonna strike it before the hearing.
No, I'm just saying, we have other options, but, you know, this, this has potential being a revenue generator for the town.
I have my own feelings about marijuana altogether, but it's not up to me, it's up to the town meeting.
I think if you don't put something in place, then we're probably open for other items to occur.
We'll be muscled into something instead.
Having something is better than nothing, and if it needs to be tweaked between then, proposals can be made on the town floor by the planning board if something needs to be done. That's just.
So temporarily, I hear, we're gonna keep this on the warrant, fourteen, pending the public hearing on the 2nd of May. Like I said, you can strike it on the floor.
But Jennifer's right, oh, if we don't have some plan, oh, we need, eventually the state will just muscle us into something we don't want.
I mean, there are some communities that people jumped right on board as soon as the law was passed, and they set up shop in communities that weren't ready for it.
Franklin was one.
So, I mean, like I said, we've got, I feel better having something than nothing, because then we're in trouble.
We agree.
So a motion to approve Article fourteen.
So move. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Fifteen?
Basically, my question, this will be on the, in the public hearing as well.
Mm-hmm.
And I would personally recommend that we do the same as we did with prior.
Yep.
I hate soul.
I know, but it's revenue and.
I know, but I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with it, it's just the way they do it, and it's just a big eyesore, they don't try to hide it or.
Well, that's where we have to make sure that, for the sake of the people driving through the town, that we have certain standards, that there has to be so much vegetation to hide it. It is an eyesore, but it's also a necessity, it's coming to it, you know? And it financially can help us, and I don't think this board has the right to strike it again. I think we need to let that up to the townspeople, but we just need, the board needs to make sure that it's a strong bylaw that requires vegetation or some sort of a barrier to hide the, you know.
Presently, there's only one area where you could put these pounds, because of the power distribution throughout the town.
Right.
And that's along Main Street.
Right. Yeah, there's no three-phase anywhere.
Didn't we give lot access on Lincoln Street, or was that considered Main Street?
I think it was specific to the property, wasn't it?
Yeah, Lincoln Street.
So in order for this to.
Way up the end, there's three phases.
I suppose.
No.
So my understanding is, in order for this to work, you have to have three phases available?
Well, it's preferable, otherwise they gotta run it down the road, and it's expensive, and it's not worth it to them. That's what they prefer, though.
There are only two streets in town that have it, Main Street and Esther Street, because of the school.
All right. And then the Rhode Island end of, of, of Central, but it's not enough to help us out.
Motion to approve Article fifteen?
Second. Roll.
Aye.
So this is the regional school district, where they're looking to regionalize K through five across the district, pre-K through five. So anyone who is not in the know of this, basically, we would be, they would restructure the district, and they're, right now, it's not set in stone, but what they're proposing is that pre-K and one would go to the JFK complex, so that would include all of Blackstone kids and all of Millville kids would go there. Two, pre-K, one, right?
Pre-K one, two, three.
Yeah, pre-K one, and then two, three, I believe, is, I don't have it in front of me, two, three would be at the AFM side, and then four, five would be in Millville.
Four, five, all right.
Three, four, five, three, four, five in Millville, and then pre-K three, two, between the complex.
So what's the impact in Millville? You're gonna lose.
Is there a financial gain or a gain to the education?
Well, information has been limited at this point. They say that you're welcome to go to their meetings and ask some questions. They have had one walkthrough at the JFK AFM complex. They put out a very minimum basic information sheet and a video. The video did say there was no financial savings. The video also spoke about kids being friends earlier, and they talked about equity coming in, that sometimes kids coming into the middle school, there's a group of children who's behind, and it takes about a month for them to catch up academically. It is not the Millville kids who are behind academically going into the middle school. Our school is a level one school, so when you think of one, two, and three, one is the best, your MCAS are doing well, your kids are, your growth and achievements doing well, then two is that middle of the road, and three is where the state really gets on you. Two, they do some measures to help you achieve. I have children, obviously, so I've been very aware. I've got their transportation budget from last year, the, not their budget, but their agreement with Telestone. It has gone out for rebid, so.
Because this is gonna change the routes, right?
Right, so in the, this is my thing, is in their informational sheet, it says, what about busing? And it basically says, well, we can't do that until after you vote. So, and then it says, well, we're committed to keeping the buses from five to six minutes, no longer than five to six minutes, but if you Google JFK, Millville Elementary to JFK, that's a five-minute ride, and you also have standing time, bus time, but the thing is, is they don't have that information. They don't have the financial, like, I don't know what it's going to cost.
So vote on it and then read it later?
So basically, what it is, is really putting the faith within, like, you vote on it, and then they're gonna work out the details. My personal opinion, I want all of the details of if it stays this way, if it goes this way, and I have my full picture. Right now, I'm asked for, in blind faith, to say that they're gonna do the right thing. I.
I don't like what I'm hearing.
I don't, I'm not, I'm going to the meetings on Thursday, but also that their committee, I don't think, has ever come here to talk to us as the leader of the community about this plan. And I don't think, I mean, I have been in the know, because I have children in it, but.
Well, what's the gain? They're saying nothing. Isn't that what you just said, there's no.
Other than personal reaction.
Yeah, I mean, there are some thoughts that, you know, your gym teacher, your music teacher might not have to go from school to school. The equipment supplies may be different, but there's, there is no cost savings. It was made right then and there, there is no cost savings.
We face a number of issues in the town as it is, and one of the things that I look at is, the elementary school kind of pulls the population together. It's a central point in that you get the kids and you get the parents. So it's, as far as, you know, it's one of the ties that keeps us together. We have trouble filling boards and the like, but we need that social meeting place. Churches are not doing that for us as of late, you know, as much as the elementary school does. The other thing is, we're facing a lot of issues in terms of this building, and if in an emergency, we needed to use part of that, we need to consider that.
Well, we have to also consider, because it's a roof, it has to be used for schools, so us using it as a town hall could impact our.
MSBA.
Yes, so we have to, I mean, but if you don't have a building, then you're kinda.
It's a temporary situation.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
But we need to talk about that.
Yeah.
Together, collectively. What are we gonna do? What's our plan?
So their brief flyer that went out was, the main reason was to provide equal opportunity for all children in the district with the resources they currently have. That is the statement. Based, why are you doing this? Based on the surveys and meetings across the district. That is their answer.
Well, but pre-K through five in Millville has the same administrative leaders as pre-K through five in Blackstone. It is essentially the same school district. It's just, three buildings are not regionalized, and they're trying to regionalize the three buildings. I understand that, but it's like, I can't vote and then read it later.
Yeah, and busing, it says that they're committed to, likely that stops will, but routes are to be determined. They ask about the start and the end times of schools, especially if you have kids in multiple locations now, you have to pick up, to be determined once the logistics are decided.
Yeah, that's gonna be tough for the families, you're right, now that you say that. What about people that have three kids, or even four kids, that are a year or two apart? Now, they're gonna be going to three or four different schools all the time. That's gonna be tough.
I mean, there are towns that do it that are towns, but we are two separate towns.
Yeah.
So I, like I said, I'm not for it. I have, I said way back when I was on.
Jennifer, you made a good point, Jennifer. They're asking us, okay, this, before we get.
But we don't have some big pieces of this puzzle.
Right, so my answer to you is, well, to this board is, the way, what I'm hearing is and that, I don't even wanna entertain this, I wanna strike it because.
We can't.
But, why?
We can't, based upon the regional agreement.
Because of the regional agreement, we have to leave it and let the townspeople strike it themselves by.
Well, by voting.
By voting against it.
Well, if we have to vote on this article, I'm gonna vote no then.
I just, like I said.
You can show that you disagreed tonight.
And I will agree that I'm.
I disagree, because there's so many, so many questions and no answers.
Too many variables.
Well, there's not information. You know, I was speaking to a very wise community member who said it's like a three-legged milking stool, and we've got two legs, and we don't have that third leg. We don't have some of that information. So we cannot, at least.
It's a shame that we can't strike this, because we don't get our answers, you know, we gotta leave it. We'll have one opportunity collectively as a town, and that'd be Thursday afternoon at the senior center. At four o'clock, it's early, but.
Well, for, Millville is at four, and I think the Blackstone library is at 6:30. You can go to either one, you don't have to go, you know, it's not, Millville people have to go to Millville one, and anybody can go to any one and have some questions answered, but they've been pretty steadfast that the busing issue will, and the start times will only be determined after the votes, after they have that information.
And the start times, okay, so that's kind of understandable, they gotta map it out through the summer, probably, I'm sure, but, I mean, cost-wise.
Right, and they're not looking, and in their, in their defense, they're not looking for it to begin, this fall, it would be 2017, so they've given themselves leeway to get all of that information. I just prefer to have all of the information so I can vote. And honestly, I was the one who told Tim and Jesse about the meetings so that they could videotape it. So originally, there was not even, videotaping was not gonna be done if I hadn't reached out and asked them if they were doing it. So I have a problem with that, too, because I, my understanding, they were surprised when Jesse or, was it, Jesse, was it you or Tim that showed up?
For what?
The walkthrough at AFM.
Oh, Tim did.
Tim. My understanding is that they were surprised that they were videotaping. So if you really wanna educate the public, you really need to educate the public, educate me, educate. And I know they're doing those meetings, but this board tonight is here, and we haven't heard from them in their formal proposal in regards to this. So I'm not for it, but I want to let you know what I know. It is my opinion, those are the facts. It is my opinion, those are the facts, and I know them. Could I be wrong on some things here and there? Maybe, but I'm at a ninety-nine percent confidence on what I've told you this evening.
Well, uh, motion on approval of Article eighteen.
I vote not to approve Article eighteen.
Okay, so you second? You're gonna-
Second, yeah, yeah.
Second? Alright, all in favor?
No, we, we have to leave it here.
Well, we can put our recommendation-
Well, we'll leave it, but we can nay, and just show them at the town meeting that we don't agree.
I'm a nay.
I'm a nay.
Nay, oh well. What was the motion? Not to recommend?
Not recommend it, yeah.
So it would be an aye?
Oh, yeah, right, aye.
Aye.
Not recommend. Don't make that mistake.
Sorry.
No, I know, but, you know, cause it says approve here, zero, zero, you know.
Mr. Opposing your vote?
May.
So we're all in-
I could change my mind on Thursday, who knows?
Who knows?
We can address that on May ninth.
No, no, Mike Vogel, again.
No, you can say aye.
Aye.
Cause we're voting to not approve it.
Yeah, they all voted, they don't want it.
The recommendation is zero to four.
On the first, right. So approve is zero to four.
Well, it would be disapproval, four to zero.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, Hunter.
Article nineteen, Jen, you had something?
Um, well, I know it was a, a citizen petition.
Yep.
And I know the first one came through the chief, and Mr. Hertz, who stood up and spoke about this at the last meeting, and I, I had laughed, I watched it at home. But was, is this all good? Does it work well with the first part of the petition, with the chief's old one, with the master general law? Is this, is there any, um-
I think the chief's original was three hundred feet, right?
Yeah, no, 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 it was three hundred, he changed to five hundred.
Okay, oh, yeah.
It was two-
Cause the state law is three hundred.
Right, and it said, "We need to keep it", and he raised it another two hundred.
So, the bold piece is the piece in which the change is, correct?
He changed it to five hundred feet of any, basically, anywhere near a house, a roadway, anything, you can't discharge it.
Roadway, pathway, the-
Resident house.
Greenway, or a house.
And this-
Or a public building.
Did the police chief look at this and-
Yes, he did this, yeah. Uh, he agrees with, he agrees-
He agrees with it.
To my knowledge, I have not discussed it with him, so I cannot say whether he agrees with it or he's seen it. I haven't discussed it with him.
I'm sure he'll be at the town meeting.
I ran it by him, and he indicated that he was, uh, approved of it. He did recommend a, a penalty, uh, cause it was submitted without, uh, suggestion for a penalty.
The state law allows that, so that would fall under the state law that he could do that, right?
Give him a ticket.
Ticket and, and/or fine.
It'll also take away your piece, or your firing.
Which he does, quite often.
Yes.
Alright, that's, I just wanted to make sure that-
Yeah, because they had an incident down by the, down, you were measuring with your kids and this and that, there was shooting at one day and this and that, he went down there, and it was like three hundred, and that's when he changed it to five hundred.
Alright.
This three hundred feet's not far. Sounds like a lot.
Not.
Especially with today's, uh, fire alarms.
Okay, um, so, okay, I just, just for a point of clarification, there is a penalty in, the bylaw will be changed in Article thirty, section thirty-four, thirty-six dash four, and the penalty is included in, would include in that.
Thirty-six dash one?
No.
But I think it was changed.
Yeah.
So it's, it's-
Oh, it's already in, right, exactly. It's already there. I, okay, I gotcha.
Motion to, to the articles-
Still moved.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Um, if we can for a minute, just with respect to the town administrator article, did you have anything that you wanted to put out as far as a flyer, or did you wanna schedule any public information sessions, or?
Uh-
It's, was there a talk about-
Maybe not a hearing, but have a public meeting.
Was there a talk with the-
Education, uh, information meeting or something.
We definitely could, I think the work that the search committee has done-
We don't technically have to do a hearing, there was not a-
Mm-hmm. No, I think, I, you know what? We're asked, I'm, I think it's a good idea to put out, whether it's a flyer, whether it's a, even if it's a video that we can run about how we got here and what we did to get here. I think that's even appropriate, maybe, um, speak to a few people, or the search committee and what they did to get to this. I'm not, I don't know what we want to do, or-
If we do a video, we could do a link to YouTube right off the website, right?
Mm-hmm.
Plus have it on the, on the access chain.
Yep. So, I guess-
That would be the greenway, I would.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I think getting the information out there prior to, because I know I ran into someone, and they said, "We can't afford it", and I go, "What do you mean, we can't afford it? How are we gonna afford an executive secretary and a town administrator?". I said, "We are not going to have an executive secretary, we'll have a secretary to the administrator", and that's how it's structured. But they're, they're, what they were told was different, so, you know what I mean? I informed them, and they were like, "Oh, I get it now", but they thought it was in addition to our current structure. So I don't think education is ever a bad thing. It's just how do we wanna do that?
Well, it's about twenty-nine thousand dollar increase altogether. Some people are thinking it's a fifty thousand, sixty thousand.
Well, they think it's the whole salary.
Right, or nine, or seventy thousand.
Some people thought it was the whole salary.
Um-
I'm good with a video, if people wanna do that, but some people don't like that.
I, I'm not gonna do the video.
Or even, but even whether it's a PowerPoint, or-
I am in the line.
Um, you know, within the video, I, I don't know. I mean, Jerry's sitting here, I mean, do you think it would be informative for your committee to, to do a piece on that, along with the selectmen doing a piece on how we got to where we were?
Um, yeah, I'm never opposed to educating the public, but in place-
Would you be willing, or-
What I heard was, that night, and the question that was asked on the, uh, uh, town council, was a mailer going out to individual homes to give, as I view it, a pro and con.
Right.
And she said, "I think that, um, specific issues, that's done many times in lots of communities, not all of them, only all these out of the, that was a total, right? Just something that said, 'This is the reason why, and this is the reason we think you shouldn't, if someone chooses to do that.'" And I, I thought I heard that the town does, or can, if it chooses, to send out a pro con.
Yes.
Hopefully, would, maybe, hopefully get them to the website, so they can see some of the report. I think key element here is the report, that people were hopefully interested enough to read the dang thing, twenty, twenty pages, they could see some of the issues that's going on, and indeed be interested enough to maybe go on the website, cause Ellen's posted it up right on the top of the, uh, top of the website for the town, so that people can look at that and see what the issues are. So, my opinion would be something of almost like a postcard that says, "Here's what's for, here's what it against, look at the website." At least they could read it, and then if they choose, say, "Now, I wanna do that", or, "Yes, I do", that's up to them, but at least they're enlightened to it. Going there without any knowledge of any of this doesn't make any sense. That report dictates the first page and a half, it talks about how we get here. The request, you guys asked what they did, how they did it, who did it, when they did it, and what they come up with in January. It's all right there, in the first introduction page and a half. That's, I don't know what else you need. If you're interested enough, you'll read it. If you're not, you come to the meeting, you have not a clue what's going on, and I need to prevent that.
Does everybody in town have access to the website? Is that just through the internet, then?
Yes.
Everybody, everybody in town has-
W-W-W dot-
Or though people can get there, but not, does anybody have that source? Especially for older people?
Do you mean people that may not have computer or internet service?
They can, they can access it at the library, or if they belong to the senior center, they can get it up there as well.
Again, I know-
But like you're saying, if they get a mailer, they'll get that information, some of it.
A mailer could give ultimate, you know-
Locations.
Gives two or three other things that you can do if you're interested enough to go find out. Senior Center's a good one, library's a good one.
Mm-hmm.
Or if they wanna come down here, they can get a copy of the DLS report.
Postcard would-
I think that is, I think that just highlights, otherwise you're being redundant, it's just a thing. They tell you the whole thing from soup to nuts right there.
Mm-hmm.
How it happened, how we got to where we're at right now.
Right.
So, that's just my opinion. I think, my, my thought was that when she was talking that night, it sounded like it was something that towns do.
Yeah, so-
In the nineties, sixties.
So I had had a conversation with ethics, um, I don't know, a month, maybe two months ago, about a different issue, but it was about town meeting. And I was questioning what kind of information you can put out, cause I know when it's a ballot question, when we did our two and a half on the ballot, that falls with, that falls under the attorney general, and there are specific things you can and cannot do for that. Town meeting is kinda that other area where there are no strict guidelines or laws, um, for that, so you, and then, once she said that, it all came tumbling back, my, my former conversation with the ethics committee in regards to, um, town meeting. So, um, that, I guess, you know, I think you're right, like, you put out a postcard, and then direct them to the website, so even if they don't have internet, they at least get the postcard with some information and places to get more information.
How about a summary mailer?
Could do that. I just don't know how much we wanna put on, and how much not to put on.
Did you get a chance to talk to the, I think, last time you guys met, you said you were waiting for the, the question was asked, and you were saying you were waiting for some word from the-
Oh, yeah, she had replied saying that there was no limit.
And, and as far as that goes, you can do what you, the town, or what you folks-
Correct.
Okay. So, you gotta, you gotta kind of launch to do what you wish to do.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I mean, if you wanted to put what the article is, where you can get further information, and then maybe having a, you could do a statement for pro, and you could get a pro, a statement for con, and those people would have to sign their name at the bottom of their reasoning, and you could mail that out. And then that way, you're saying where the information is, you're having someone who's in the know for the pro, you're having someone in the know who writes the con, they attach their name to it, cause that's how they feel, and you could mail that out, and that's a very simple thing, it's just asking two people who are willing to put in paragraph form why they think the way they think. I mean, that, it could be as easy as that. I'm, just keep throwing out ideas, until, until one of them sticks to the wall.
Well, the, the, the mission you've got there is the same one. The mission is to educate people.
Right.
That's the mission.
And I don't want it to seem, cause I am for the administrator, I don't want it to seem all one-sided either.
Well, no, they, anybody has a right to say-
One thing or the other.
Do whatever they want. I'm saying it should be balanced. I think that's only fair.
Yeah.
But I think the idea of, as you have said, allowing them to know where they can access the full report without getting redundant and sending out a walkover, you can't do that.
No.
It's gonna be relatively short and be brief, and just say pro con, and then my opinion, and then just go and put something involved where you can access the information if you so decide.
Yep.
Uh, I, I think those are the three things you can get, and then truly up to the people, you can't, you can't make them read them. They, they have to take some ownership in the government themselves.
And just cause they get it, doesn't mean they come to town meeting either.
Right.
So, so we're at the nineteenth.
So we need to put an action plan together if we're gonna do that.
Right, if the board would like to get that, um, every door mailer out, I would like to, at the very latest, get that out, um, by May second or third, if you want that in the households-
I was gonna say-
By the Saturday before.
Are we meeting next week?
Uh, we're reading, meeting Wednesday night to go over the budget. I can certainly add that to the agenda if you'd like. Not this Wednesday, it's next Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Okay, cause I'm like, I don't have it for the twentieth, cause I have missed it in here. It does not say board of selectmen. I have it for the twenty-seventh, okay. Yeah, maybe put it on for the twenty-seventh.
April, April twenty-seventh.
Put it on the agenda.
Okay. I mean, I would, I mean, what's the format that we want? And at least we can start a draft of it.
Right.
So that the twenty-seventh, we have it, a draft-
And that's at six.
So if this-
Twenty-seven, right? Please. Six o'clock?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah. Come prepared.
So I, feel free to not agree with me. I make a motion to put a flyer out that states the article, the wording, well, not all of the wording, um, the article, the intent of the article, I guess, um, in layman's term, with where to get the information for the DLS report, along with a pro and con statement, to be mailed out to every household.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Roll.
And then that way, we can have the draft in the twenty-seventh, approve of it, and so it's ready to go, you know, print, get printed and mailed out by the second or third.
Okay. Um, I can certainly come up with, you know, the article, the wording, where people can find the report, et cetera, but I'm not sure where you would like me to go for the pro and con. Any recommendations on who you would like to provide those paragraphs?
Well, we have to think about how many words, too, will fit on that.
You'd be able to, if you recall the, um, the mailers that the town clerk sends out, Diane, in fact, you'll be getting one this week, um, you can fit a good amount on an eight and a half by eleven, so.
But with the information on top, I mean, I'm just saying the pro and con people will need to be prepared to shorten if need be. Um, I, you know what? I don't have a problem with asking some different individuals to draft what they think, and then we can choose between them.
Yeah, just have everybody email me.
Maybe two or three. Um, and I mean, we all know who's been involved and who's been working on this from the get-go, and see if they would like to submit a pro or con, and then us as a board can select one of each to put on.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, um, just out of curiosity, I mean, um, could you give sort of a limit as to what the, is it gonna have to put the article on there?
Uh-huh.
What the purpose of it is, and so you're gonna think some of that space is gonna have to be dedicated to that.
Yes.
Some space is gonna have to be dedicated to senior center, library, I don't mind that, like, stuff. It leaves you X amount of space.
Right.
Could you see how many characters?
Sure.
Just, just roughly, say, listen, can't be more than a hundred.
Yeah.
Has to be a hundred fifty.[1689.87] Has to be a hundred fifty, that way there you can truncate what you're trying to say, so you can use a part of the words on it, otherwise.
Because it's probably gonna be a header with two columns.
That's what I'm saying, so it, it, it needs, if you could just say, yeah, it needs to be a hundred and twenty-five words or less, or characters or less, whatever you want.
You do carry.
That way there you know where you can fit it in, otherwise it'd be trying to fit the thing in like a puzzle.
And if you do characters, then it's easily on your computer, you can easily.
Yeah, you can do a comma.
You can do a comma.
Put a comma on it, so at least it made it easier for you, so you're not there to figure out how many things you've worked on.
Or how they, or send it back for editing of.
Right.
One sentence or two.
Because you don't have, who knows what your timing is, there's not a lot of time there.
Right.
That'd be a big one.
Mrs. Coffin, do you have everything you need?
I do.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
A second.
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Board Selectment Meeting for April nineteenth at seven o'clock. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Announcements, I have two. May second for the planning board, public hearing, here at, uh, what is it, six?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. And the other one is, uh, May second is only like twelve days away, and that's the day of the big parade, the centennial celebration. That window's closing up fast.
May first, one o'clock.
May first at one o'clock.
Better get here early if you want room on the sidewalk.
Approval of minutes, there are no minutes for this evening.
Yeah, there is one set.
April.
There's one set.
Yep, April fourth. April fourth or fifth, it says fifth.
Oh, I'm sorry, April fifth.
Oh, fifth, yeah, that's a typo, I apologize.
Approval of, uh, treasury warrants, I think there are none, they, they look slightly delayed.
We don't have the warrants tonight?
No, the town accountant wasn't able to complete those before he left, so you'll likely have to come in tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon to sign them, yeah.
Invited guest speakers.
Do we want to approve the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
April fifth?
Fourth.
Oh, yeah.
Fifth, yeah.
Eight, four.
Got a motion?
It's like deja vu.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye. Got my roll skates on today. Invited guest speakers, none, boards and committees, we have, uh, Mr. Joe Layden, a town planner. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello. Joe, two questions.
Yes.
Primarily, uh, the, uh, the bylaws pertaining to medical marijuana.
Yes.
And the other being, uh, solar.
Yes.
Questions regarding, uh, how that all fit into the proposed master plan, and his, uh, expectations for generation of revenue for the, for the town.
Okay, so, um, first item being the, the solar, um, back when we were, uh, trying to get green community designation, um, one of the components of getting green communities designation is to allow for, um, expedited permitting for solar facilities. That was the course of action that we had, um, taken, and with that was the creation of a site plan review, um, bylaw, as well as renewable energy bylaw, that was pretty specific as far as the requirements that were needed for submission of applications, um, and then also as far as, uh, site control, so, uh, buffer screening, looking at, uh, at fencing, separation from additional uses. Uh, we identified three parcels, uh, to, uh, go within that, that district. Uh, since that time, then, we had, uh, inquiry from a property owner who abutted, where we then already had the district, so that a couple of years ago, we expanded that to include that land. Uh, since that time, we've had two other inquiries, as well as a company that was asking, uh, is whether one of the, the parcels that is within the district is being one eighty-one Main Street. Uh, so with that, the planning board recognized that either we are on a piecemeal, um, basis, going to be expanding the overlay district to then include these, or we could, uh, by way of a special permit, which then would be discretionary with the planning board, we, it would be, uh, one of the standards would be whether or not it's in harmony with the neighborhood, you know, and, uh, take into consideration a much broader, uh, ability to review a proposal against the impacts to the neighborhood the site plan review would allow, and we felt that through issuance of a special permit, we could properly, uh, regulate, not only evaluate, but then also regulate any approvals to require that there be a specific landscaping plan that gets maintained, that there's, um, no disturbers that are preserved, uh, between, say, if you had some, you know, say you had five hundred feet to a residence or a thousand feet, that there established some sort of buffer that they can't touch or anything like that, and it would be codified in the special permit decision, where then at least, uh, gives us a lot greater opportunity to enforce that decision. So the board felt that, um, we have the overlay district for sites that we really would want it, and then the special permit would be for those areas that maybe are outside of that district, but it might make sense, and it may not have that much of an impact, and would allow the planning board to, uh, evaluate, hold a public hearing, and then condition, uh, put, uh, conditions that then would be in the best interests of, say, a butters, as well as the town. Uh, just for example, from a revenue side, uh, a lot of times what happens is that, uh, these companies will enter into some sort of pilot program with the town, rather than trying to identify what the value for the improvement is on the, on the parcel, and negotiate some sort of, um, cost per, per megawatt. In, in Grafton, we do the same, the same thing, we approve solar facilities just by special permit, um, in that basically, we're looking in the range from eighteen thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars a year, as far as, uh, property taxes, uh, that are gained from these facilities, so, uh, the planning board felt that if there was a proposal that came forward, and, um, uh, that the planning board felt it could condition it, that may at least be something that could generate revenue for the town, and that, uh, the special permits would give us the right belt and suspenders to, to allow that to occur, if it was appropriate. So, and how it fits in with economic development is, is, uh, is one, um, it becomes just part of the, the package of tools that then is, is available to the town, uh, not only, uh, the zoning changes that occurred, but then also this, as far as, a lot of times, they're looking at more, uh, not only where can you tie into the grid, but then also on topography and, and geography of the site, to see what works, you know, the correct slope, um, you know, the proximity of addition, of, of trees, and, and, and so, uh, the, the citing requirements are a little bit more based on solar orientation than something that we can easily quantify on the ground, saying, okay, we're gonna do a commercial district right here in the village area, because unless you're taking a look at, uh, grading plans and elevations all around the town, looking at where, where it really fits for a best solar, um, orientation, um, that's something that the companies have a much better grasp on, and the special permit would give us the control.
My understanding is that we're rather limited in town to where we could cite solar, in that.
Uh, that's, exactly, so we're either going, doing a town-wide, um, evaluation of every single parcel and adding things to the overlay district, or we allow it by a special permit, which then, um, locations that would make the most sense from the market standpoint would be able to come forward, and would be able to be evaluated by the planning board.
Now, special permit would be, I know the answers, just wanted to make sure it's out there. Special permit does not have to be granted, unlike the other businesses.
Exactly.
Permits, um, special permits can also have restrictions based upon neighbors' concerns.
Exactly.
In-town concerns.
Exactly.
And, okay, I think that was it, I just want to make sure that it's understandable, they're just not gonna come in and say, I'm doing it, just because a special permit is a little more difficult and has a lot more variables that can be applied to it than others.
And, and it's also four out of five members, so it isn't something that a simple majority has. If there was a situation where someone wanted to appeal the project, it basically is stopped cold in its, in its track, versus site plan review is basically as of right with reasonable controls. Uh, the board is able to take into consideration testimony from a butters, and, and my experience in other towns where it is a special permit, you know, the landscaping and, and the buffer areas that are protected, or landscaping that is put in, really gives the, the, the board, um, very specific criteria for evaluating things, and also, uh, the bylaw requires that they provide information, like on generators, on sound, uh, so that we're really able to get into not only the visual impacts, but then also any audible impacts, you know, because a lot of times they'll have generators on site, what, and allow us to look into those things, and, and require information as far as the sound that's generated, uh, so that, you know, it does give us a lot greater, uh, reviewing, uh, ability of multiple issues, um, that then would impact the character of the neighborhood or butters.
You've addressed my concerns, the questions that I had on that, and you'll have a public hearing on May second.
May second, yes.
If you have residents out there that have further questions, they're welcome to.
Absolutely.
What, though, is that seven thirty? So it'll be upstairs that we're meeting? So it won't be videotaped for.
No, but, um, you know, if it's something that we're able to coordinate to at least have it taped, so at least at a future time. I know we've done that for other projects.
Moving on to medical marijuana.
So this is, this is, um, something that at least, uh, has been gaining, uh, momentum across the state. I think it's taken the state a little while, when, when it was first adopted, uh, by ballot initiative back in two thousand and twelve, uh, to allow medical use of marijuana, um, the Department of Public Health took close to a year to come up with regulations to, uh, to regulate that process, but then also how, not only for the personal use, for, for people who, um, are approved to use medical marijuana, but then also for the facilities that would grow as well as sell. Um, and, uh, the process is very detailed, there are specific citing requirements, um, that the state has put into place. For example, um, a location cannot be, uh, cannot be within five hundred feet of a place where children commonly congregate, that, that can be anything from a school, daycare, but then also to, you know, if you had an art studio or a music studio that had lessons geared towards kids, um, you know, uh, also becomes a question as far as pediatrician doctor's office, that's also, uh, one of those things that, um, the state is looking at, where there's kids that are coming in, a place that congregates, or even, you know, uh, boys' clubs, or just any sort of community center. So, that's already on the books as far as putting a, a limit on the location of these uses. Also, there's very specific, uh, security, um, plans that they need to demonstrate, lighting signage, you know, you can't have a, uh, sort of, if we remember the Joe Camel days, you know, uh, where, where they were accused of, of, um, having a symbol that was attractive towards kids, uh, the state also doesn't allow you to have, um, any signage or emblem that, um, sort of characterize or makes that more attractive to the user, something that, um, you know, graphically could be seen as, as attention-grabbing. Uh, so, the states come up with these regulations, and, um, at first, there was a limit of so many within a county, like, two places within a county, however, uh, back in two thousand and fifteen, that cap got lifted, and now we're seeing a lot more coming in. There was already one approved in Shrewsbury, there's one going through the process in Oxford, uh, Grafton has, uh, one that, that currently is getting permitted, um, I've heard of, I believe, one in, in Bellingham, um, and then Milford as well. Uh, so, the main thing is, uh, right now, it, for Millville, it would be considered a retail use or industrial use. So either site plan review or special permit, depending on the, the type of business. And there's two different kinds of medical marijuana facilities that are allowed. Uh, one is a registered mari- uh, medical marijuana dispensary, that includes growing, manufacturing, and dispensing. And then there's off-site medical marijuana dispensary, which is basically just a retail store. You can only go in if you have a medical card, um, there's specific site, uh, site controls and security that's there. But that's really is a, is a retail use, and, um, within Millville, uh, the planning board was the opinion, you know what, we don't want to allow it, we want, don't want to treat it like it's a convenience store, we want to have a special permit, uh, level of review, so that we could really look at and solicit input from neighbors, and have more of a special permit control to, uh, to regulate, uh, not only whether the, the use is appropriate in that location, or, uh, but then also lighting, hours, making sure that, uh, the use can't change without coming back to the planning board. The reason why that last part is important is that, um, there is a ballot initiative for the fall for recreational marijuana. Um, there also is a state, uh, bill right now, uh, also basically allowing recreational, it's basically taxation of, the, the bill name is like taxation of medical marijuana. Within that, if, if, if a medical marijuana dispensary or off-site medical marijuana dispensary, uh, was already in existence, both bylaws basically allow recreational to be sold out of there, so, uh, that's the reason why the planning board wanted, wanted to put this forward, was one, to make sure that, as these started spreading around the, the Worcester County region, one, we had appropriate level of control, but then also basically, um, that automatic shifting towards recreational, uh, sales could be regulated and prevented through the issuance of a special permit. If someone came in and said, you know what, here's a use, we want to come into, to Millville, um, if the town felt it was appropriate, we could regulate it and condition it so that it stays the medical, not opening up to something else. It, this, this article is, is really about separating it out from a retail component to give us additional protection, but then also not knowing what's gonna happen in the fall, give us then at least additional controls already on the books. We've had very lengthy conversations in Grafton about this, including can we adopt a moratorium on recreation? How do you adopt a moratorium when something's not even legal yet? And Grafton's doing the same thing, moving it towards a special permit, so when I've reviewed all this with the planning board, they were very supportive of making sure that we didn't get caught in a situation that a use could come in that would not fit within Millville, um, or, uh, that we could put additional protection so that in the future, depending on what happens, we weren't caught unaware, or off-guard.
Does the board have questions?
Do not, I think you answered any concerns I had.
If I may, you had given us a number of eighteen to twenty-five K, would be for the, uh, solar panels, roughly, that's what you come up with. How would you come up with that number, is that something based on kilowatt produces X amount, gives you Y amount of, uh, week?
Exactly, um, I, at least in, um, in Grafton, where, and it depends on, on the companies, too. Uh, there was one where it was basically, uh, ten thousand per kilowatt, and it was, uh, one point seven, uh, not kilowatt, uh, megawatt. Um, it was like a one point, uh, seven megawatt facility, um, uh, so then that basically netted us around eighteen and all that setting.
Would that, they only have to be a certain size to be allowed for it to be a one point seven megawatt? On an ex amount basis?
Yeah.
So it's a relationship between the amount of acres, to the amount of revenue that can be.
Generated.
Performed, correct?
Yeah, exactly, so if you're, if you're only at, you know, um, if you only have about three acres for a site, by the time you put in your buffers, you put in your, uh, the fire departments typically want access around the facilities, you know, you're down to probably about two acres, um, and a similar-sized project we have, that was about, um, uh, one point five, uh, megawatt that was generated on that size of project. Sometimes it, it depends on just who it is, they, they, um, either are a little bit more willing because of the need that they're getting, or the financing, um, that they're building in, uh, but it basically is a range that then we're trying to stay with then.
The numbers you, you've come up with is based on what we have availability relative to what the size is, relative to all the factors you just mentioned?
The, the price range is basically what I've seen go forward for projects in Grafton, where I also work.
Right, right.
So here, I haven't seen any of this, because we haven't gotten to that point yet, so it's hard to say, like, here in, in Millville, what that value would be.
Oh, okay, I thought you said it was eighteen to twenty-five.
No, that's, that's what, um, just using comparative example from another town, what we could see in a range, but that range is like a, a one point seven to a two.
I'm fine, I, I just wanted to see if you had designated a site that would be able to equal that amount of revenue, that's all. I understand you get it as comparison, not as an action.
Yeah.
Fair? Second question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, you talked about the medical marijuana, uh, and I think you said it was growing and dispensing, or a dispensing.
Yes.
Those types, right? Okay, uh, do you have any idea, because you've been looking in Milford and all these other Grafton, they are, do you have any idea what does that mean to the town in terms of revenue?
Uh, so, some towns have negotiated basically, um, a, uh... So some towns have negotiated basically a, not quite a pilot, but they, they basically had a memorandum of agreement with, with a facility that then has included either a straight dollar amount or a percentage of gross sales. Worcester, most recently, a couple of weeks ago, was in the news for, for having done this. The town itself would be in a position with town council, so assistance identifying what would be in the best, the best interest. I've heard, because many of these are considered nonprofits, although they're not 501(c)(3)'s because this, the feds won't recognize it as a legitimate business. So there are some questions that other planners, because we've, this has been, at conferences, been a growing topic.
Okay, my question, my question really, and I don't want to take up any more time, that question just comes down to, you've got a growing and dispensing, is one type.
Yep.
Is that more profitable to a town, or just a dispensing? I understand dispensing is, is total sales. So would the town be looking for a growing and dispensing?
So I have, I have, the, the article has both uses.
Yeah.
One is really more industrial.
Is that more?
That's the growing and the manufacturing and the dispensing, so.
That would have a heavier revenue stream coming back to the town than it would be just on dispensing, is that fair?
Yes, yes. And, and I, and basically, some of these end up being in the equivalent of large-scale warehouses that are eighty thousand, fifty to eighty to a hundred thousand square feet buildings with all internal growing and all of that. So.
But you'd have to fit it into a piece of property. We haven't come up with any type of recommendation, but expected revenue could be from something like that, right?
No, no.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Adam Levin.
I have one, not to do with the marijuana or, or the solar.
Yeah.
Did you, the information I sent you on the power plant, did you get that?
I got the contact.
Yes.
Information, yes.
And then, just FYI, Kevin Curles, the state rep is upstairs. He's the one that informed me of that right after Uxbridge failed it, so.
Yeah.
He's got all the right people, the actual people to.
Oh, okay.
That's been speaking with him.
Yeah.
And, and he would definitely, if, you know, we decide to, to pursue something like that, Kevin is definitely on our side and wants to help us out.
And that's where, like, that, that use, I believe, ends up just falling under special permit, that it wouldn't require any change in zoning like Uxbridge required. So, you know, minus just having Larry verify that, I think that, at least from zoning side, you know, is something that we're already set up to accommodate.
Okay. Let's do what we need it. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Public forum?
Like fifty.
I want the property rejoined.
Norman, through it, twenty-five eyes. I just have a question from the board. When we established a search committee for a town administrator, I believe at that meeting sometime back in February, I had brought up the question of whether that we would hold a public forum to educate people of the town as to the change in government. And it was agreed upon, I believe, by the board that they would do so. Then I think Jennifer, at some point further on, you had said that the board would distribute flyers to each and every resident of the town to inform us. And I'm just wondering as to the status of this, has anything been done?
We just, we just actually voted at the six o'clock meeting.
I wasn't here.
To do, yeah. No, that's fine. And that's what we're doing. Exactly what, and, and we're gonna, our goal is to put it in the mail by May second.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much.
And we're also, well, you'll see it if you're watching on TV, but we're also going to, in that pro-con, we're gonna also give people other ways of accessing the information, whether they, if they need assistance for internet, they go to the library, go to the senior center, where they have internet access. Okay?
Next on the agenda is correspondence. I only have one piece of correspondence, and, and that regards the Department of Revenue. They've approved our aggregation agreement with Colonial Power, and I intend to look further into that so that we could bring it to the residents. But that, that's the goal, that's, plus it gives us some brownie points on the, the green energy.
Well, that's good. They, they guesstimated April. That last year.
They guessed that April they'd be ready, so.
And that, that's all I had on correspondence. Anyone else? The next thing is resignations and appointments. We don't have appointments, but we have, thank you, Joe. We have a resignation dated April eleventh, twenty sixteen. Dear Board of Selectment Members, I am providing you with written notice of my withdrawal from the Millville Council on Aging. Given the recent notice from Town Council that alternates, alternates cannot be part of the COA Board, I would think that of the three alternates, you could certainly choose a replacement. My withdrawal is effective as of the date sincerely, Pat Leisure.
Thank you to Mrs. Leisure for all the hard work that she's done for the past few years. I know that she took it upon herself to redo the landscaping up there and get a whole group of people together and organize all that. And her and that board really brought the senior center back to life, and they're doing more now than they, than they've done ever. And I just have the information because my wife's one of them, but, she's not a member, we're not old enough, but she's a.
With regret that we would accept the resignation of Patricia Leisure.
Your second, roll.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye. And as always, your letter will go out to her, thanking her. I know she's done a lot.
And I've actually already received one letter of interest from one of the alternates. Would the board like me to contact the other two and see if there's any interest?
Keep it there.
Keep it there between the three.
Executive Secretary's report.
Yeah, just very briefly, I wanted to update the board on the Boy Scout agreement that we had sent to Town Council for review and a legal opinion.
For the Hill Street property?
Yes. And that, that agreement was in perpetuity. So she was a little perplexed by that. She's never seen anything too, close to that. I told her I would look to see if I could find the minutes of Board of Selectment meetings from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen sixty-eight. Unfortunately, the town's minutes start at nineteen seventy-five. I was able to locate the town meeting warrant and the results that authorized the selectmen at the time to enter into that agreement, so I've sent that to her. She does send her apologies to the board. She admits she's put it on the back burner. She wasn't quite sure how to address it, but she wanted the board to know she has not forgotten about it. And that's it.
Moving on, unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry.
Helen?
Yep. That was your report. Was there anything in regards to the emails and about from Bob Ferrari that can be discussed at this point? Sure. Right now, pending approval from the District Administration. He's scheduled to go on a site visit with the DEP representative nine AM Thursday morning. They've been working to tweak the system, and that's really it. He's confident that the issue has been resolved. The iron levels were extremely high, so they needed to tweak the system, and apparently they tweaked it a little bit too much, causing a little extra chlorine and, you know, cleaning chemicals to go through.
So the letters that need to be sent home by, was it May twelfth?
It's thirty days from the testing, which was April twelfth, so it's May twelfth.
And that will not change? Those letters will go home regardless of what happens between now and?
Unless DEP comes back after the site visit and says, you don't need it, I don't think that would happen, but that will, you never know.
Well, yeah, they're covering their backside, too.
Right.
They, they got the blip, or whatever it was. So, okay, so it's a thirty day from testing.
Correct.
I.
And Mrs. Renary is your point person at the school right now. Mr. Hohy's on, Dr. Hohy's on leave right now.
Oh, okay, because I emailed Dr. Hohy and Priscilla, and I got a reply that Priscilla was out for the week. So then I sent one to the superintendent and his assistant. I'm just waiting to hear.
A letter went home that says, it's not Mrs. Renary, she just got married, Mrs. Schaefer. But it's under Renary, her email is still under Renary. So you may want, if you need a point person, she's the interim principal at this time.
Very good, thank you. But all subsequent, I should add, all subsequent testing since that time has come back.
Fine, acceptable, so, okay.
You know, I missed my opportunity for, for residents out there that, on, on this mail that we spoke about, Mrs. Coffin provided some notes on the content of that. It should consist of no more than two hundred words, or thirteen hundred characters, with, including spaces. So if you're gonna, if, you know, if you're gonna submit something, it should come within those constraints. Old unfinished business, the rear parking lot signage.
Yes, Chief Landry submitted his suggestions for that signage. I would just like to know how the board would like to proceed with that.
You all have it?
Yep.
Number two looks good to me. That reads municipal property, on that parcel.
Yep.
Parking allowed unless otherwise notified.
So the intent is, people may park there until it is abused, and then they will be notified.
Or not to park there.
They will be notified not to park there. If it's the same car continuously over time as a space of whatever, okay. This permit was out since we don't have permits. Resident parking doesn't belong at municipal property. No easement granted, we're really singling people out on that one. So.
It's the board's pleasure. Which one do you go for?
Number two.
Number two? Number two?
Yeah.
Number two. Motion?
Make a motion for number two.
Number two. Second. Roll?
Aye.
Done.
Joe.
Yes, sir.
After you're done, can, can we go, I do have a correspondence I totally forgot about, so whenever, we can go back to.
Okay. Why don't we sign the warrants? Vote to approve signing of the warrants, and then we'll have selectmen's forum.
All right, I'll do it then, that's fine. It's, it's kind of the same.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I entertain a motion to, to vote to approve and sign warrants.
I make a motion to accept the warrant of the special town meeting of May ninth, two thousand and sixteen, at six thirty at the Millville Elementary School, and the May ninth annual town meeting at seven o'clock at the Millville Elementary School.
I'll second that. Roll?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I did see the chief in here earlier. I'm not sure if he's still in the building, or?
No, he walked out. He's out. They, they have a, some type of a committee.
They have a parade meeting this evening.
Oh, okay. He did tell me he would be here to discuss his agreement.
Well, we're at the tail end now.
Let's move on to selectmen's forum.
All right. So last week, Senator Fatman called me up and asked, well, make a long story short, the governor is having all the senators put together high priority financial goals for the year. So Ryan's, Senator Fatman's high priority is the Millville Town Hall this year. So I had, I called Helen, and she sent Ryan the, the report with the guesstimated costs of the whole project. So that's on the table for high priority budget items for this year for, from the governor, so. And Ryan spoke with him Friday evening, and he said that it looks pretty good that Millville will get some help.
Get some attention, very good, so.
Great. And that was it. That's all I have from there.
With that said, I, I thought about this, that we, we really need to come up with some type of contingency plan of what we would do in case of an emergency, or. And I would request that on the next agenda, that we include a, a report or a discussion with the.
Building?
The building relocation, our town hall relocation committee.
Yep, I agree, especially if the thought processes from the engineers that another winter may not be feasible. Then I think we need to do it sooner than later.
He did say sooner than later, too.
One bit of information that I did receive recently. I had explained to the board that last winter, when we had the heavy snowfalls, we tried like heck to find somebody who could go up there and take the snow off the roofs, even with Chief Landry's assistance and contacting National Grid and Verizon, working with the fire department. We weren't able to find anybody with the type of equipment that could go up there and remove the snow because of the pitch of the roof, et cetera. But a gentleman from Blackstone, Dan, one of the selectmen who happens.
Keith.
Keith, who happens to own a business.
Oh, Keith.
Heard me say that at one of the meetings and actually came in to offer his services, and indicated that if he is aware of it ahead of time, he can come in and install something along the roof line so that his company can remove the snow. So I've informed the staff here of that, but if there is a heavy snow load forecast next winter, you probably want to make sure you give him a call and see if he can come install those, whatever, I'm not sure I understand it, but.
I'm actually, was trying to get the information from where I park. At my school, there's a church, Pleasant, Pleasant Street Church, I think, and they have people come in during the winter for the ice dams and for the roof, because they literally park, and we're, we're put out because of where they have to park, we have to move our vehicles. But I know they spend quite an amount of time on their roof during the winter, and they have the buckets, and their church is a little, you know, with the pitch and the angles, and I'm trying to get ahold of, I don't have his name right with me, but he's in charge of that, so. I was trying to get their, at least who they use, to ask them what they do, so there might be another person there.
And last year was tough, too, just because there were, all of the people that do do it were booked. So that was the other.
Joe, you have anything for selectmen's forum?
No, sir.
I do. All right, so, as you may or may not know, the Centennial Committee is, will be kicking off in, did you say twelve days?
Yes, sir.
The parade committee within itself has been amazing. They have, they have just done so much, I don't even make believe to know everything they've done, because they were a committee for the Memorial Day Parade. They took this on, and they have been working furiously to get this out there. They took this on and they have been working furiously to get this out there. The acts, the entertainment, there's five units, over fifteen floats. They actually told people they couldn't come because it was getting too long, which I giggled at because no parade in Millville has ever been too long. So I thought it was fantastic. But that is May first. It steps off at one o'clock at Central in Providence and it will go all the way to the town line. They've made arrangements for the buses to be parked at Phil's to just kind of disperse right then and there. So people can, they've probably seen the signs around town and in neighboring communities to let people know about it. Our committee itself, just on Friday, launched its own website. So it's WWW, and Helen, I've got to get this over to you to link it to our town page, So it's just like the town webpage, but it's got the one hundred, has all of the events, has the calendar, has a printout calendar. It has previous events, it has contact information. So before, we were kind of like word of mouth. We were Facebook, we were Twittering. But now we have one central location. If you have a question about what's going on, what the dates are for the events, it's one stop info. So you can get everything there. So hopefully people, and we'll put something there for mailings and volunteers because even though we have our subcommittees who have been working, I know the parade committee needs help with people lining up. Oh, there's the chief. And lining up, you'll need volunteers. So, and so we'll, just because you may not have helped in the planning, you can help in the execution of these events. So we ask that if you are available and you can spend some time, it would greatly be appreciated. So that's all I had.
So my question on that, on the parade is, I'm gonna have, who do I contact on where I would stage all my stuff? I'm gonna have four trucks that are almost forty feet long each.
So.
That will just be leaving and then the horses, everything will come out, off of that. But we're gonna have to leave that stuff somewhere.
So the chief.
We're being, as we speak.
Yeah.
Going back and forth. You're gonna receive all that information either in the mail or email.
Okay.
We're doing that now.
Okay.
Everyone's gonna be notified with a visionary. It's five divisions. Where to go.
Okay.
That's it.
You might have some inside information.
Then I might have another set of horses coming that'll come with two eighteen wheelers. Big set of horses. That could be a surprise. That'll be a surprise. I'm working on it.
I'll say this, the parade is long. It's a lot of people, a lot of bands. It's a very lengthy parade.
Okay.
Good parade.
I saw the dancing police officer, traffic officer of Providence, posted on the save the event page on Facebook that he's very excited to be coming to Millville.
He's on the parade as well.
Yeah. I saw that, thought that was cool.
A lot of, we'll give it up, a lot of surprises.
Good. Well, he put it out there, so.
Did he?
Yeah, he put it out there.
Some big names.
Good.
Promising.
Good.
Excellent.
Yeah, just once again, was that WWW dot Millville mouse?
Millville MA one hundred.
One hundred dot org?
Yeah. And it's the number one hundred, one zero zero.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get that linked.
Yeah. I think you have it through the Twitter. Because I think, who runs the Millville Twitter?
Yes, I've been sharing it, I guess is what you.
I've seen it go out. Yep.
We're gonna backstep again to vote to approve and sign the police chief's agreement.
Chief, you should have received a copy in your box and you've reviewed it. Great.
We had an opportunity to review this. So the only suggestion I have is we plug in the, if we vote to approve it, plug in the date of the nineteenth of April. Make a motion. I make a motion to accept the agreement and plan for the police chief and fire for Tuesday, April eighteenth.
Second.
Roll? Aye.
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 Congratulations, Chief.
Is ready to proceed? Do they need me next one?
Can you just come sign these? And I'll put a fully signed one in your box.
That would be great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No, it's somebody calling and it's not my children. So I'm not answering it.
Excuse me.
Okay, we, our next regular meeting will be May second at seven PM. We'll do signatures and then we'll adjourn to executive session after we do sessions. Come back and do.
I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session under chapter thirty A subsection twenty-one, part three, to conduct strategy session with respect to a litigation.
To return.
That's my motion. And then only to return back to this regular meeting and only to adjourn. That's the motion.
Roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.